To order.
There.
Seven oh one.
Nope.
And, uh, so what's all? Dennis Ferraro, Eagles Ness Road. Jim Johnson, Middle Drive.
Linda Winslow, Norwood Street.
Jason McCarthy, planning and zoning, Mr.
Prove the agenda.
Move to prove the agenda.
All in favor?
Aye.
Posed? Minutes from the previous meeting of October twenty-third, twenty twenty-four.
Make a motion to approve those minutes.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Posed? Okay. Public comment. Anyone wishing to comment right now before we get into the agenda items can step forward. Seeing none, we'll move on to new business, six A. Proposed vehicle, sale service, repair parts, and supply land used to be located on a property located within the development district. The address is forty-one thirty-five U.S. Forty-One West Marquette. Parcel tax ID is five-two-zero-eight-zero-one-nine-zero-two-four-two-zero. Seth Kiesler from Diesel Pro Services LLC. Jason.
Thank you. So this property is located along the south side of U.S. Forty-One. It's been a menagerie of uses over the years, all commercial though. And you can see this is just on the other side of the highway from the former Kubota shop. And there are several buildings on the property. One half of the building in the photo is proposed to be used as a automotive diesel repair shop. Only cars and only trucks, so no heavy equipment. I don't think there's room for heavy equipment in those doors. So this would be a rental situation from the owner, who is Andrew Kilpela. And in the development district, this use would require a public hearing due to the fact that there is a budding residential zoning and land use. The Iron or Heritage Trail, in my opinion, does not break, I guess, the zoning in that area. And I just think it would be prudent to have a public hearing to let everybody know what's going on and to have the planning commission be able to take a look at this closer and then add any potential conditions that might need to be added, such as oil grid separators, you know, some designated parking areas and whatnot. So we did receive what we consider to be a complete application. And the zoning is DD. The site plan's not really fleshed out, although the use has been there, the building's been there. The general parking area around the building, all those things have been there for some time. So no real changes in that capacity. It's really just using probably a warm building to do some work on vehicles by a local mechanic that would like to have a place to do such. So if the planning commission is concurring with that, we would request that a public hearing be scheduled for January eighth at seven.
Can I ask you a question?
Yes.
Are either one of the applicants here?
They're not.
They're not here. And you say it's a proposed thing. I see that they have an ad in Google on the internet and they're up and operating there currently.
That's true.
Okay, so why did you say proposed?
Well, because it's not approved yet.
Then how can they be operating?
We let them know that they're not permitted to use the building because it's not approved yet.
So are they, are they not operating in there?
Okay, Steve, if we were to, let's say there's an illegal Airbnb. I've talked to attorneys app about this before on anything. He would give a reasonable timeframe for somebody to cease operation and typically it's thirty days. So we told them, you know, if you're not approved through the, you know, the zoning process or this process, then you can't continue to exist there. I mean, largely this is a case of, you know, this is commercial property. It's a young mechanic, found a place to rent, didn't know that there were zoning requirements. And, uh, and we corrected that as quickly as possible.
I mean, even their, even their correspondence indicates it's, it's a thing in the future and they haven't been operating for three weeks. So I find that a little bit disingenuous.
Well, you can explain that to him when he's here for the public.
I mean, I wish he was here now to talk about this.
Yeah.
But that letter was a month ago.
No, but the, not November first.
What, what else is, what are, is there any other business in those other adjacent spaces?
Uh, Mr. Kilpela has his landscape business there as well.
Okay.
Which really doesn't, in my opinion, constitute, uh, constitute a change of use at this time because there was a contractor there before. Very similar types of situation. I've already talked to Mr. Kilpela about buffering, um, the Iron or Heritage Trail. Obviously, that's a scenic road, scenic area, although it's a trail. Um, and he has agreed to plant some arborvitae and other things along the south side of his property. Ironically, he also has a easement to cross the Iron or Heritage Trail and intends on building a home on the south side of the property at some point in the future.
So what is the, is that the trail between the red parallel line and the black parallel line that, is that the trail?
Yes, sir.
Thank you.
And the nearest residence is Shelby Whitman here. This is all part of the Northwoods Estates subdivision. These lines are a little bit skewed, so this is actually a little creek running through there. And then, uh, he actually has an easement that was, came with the purchase of the property to cross the Iron or Heritage Trail. Very similar to way the road crosses, uh, in Northwoods Estates.
So has there been continuous use of that building by business?
All, yeah, all of them, in some fashion. I mean, we can't keep track of everything that's in and out there. And most of it is up, elevated and out of sight.
Would there be any different zoning requirements that would have to be brought up to date with him opening in the?
I don't believe so, just to demonstrate that there's enough parking and things like that. But the, everything's happening inside, so none, none of it's visible from the roadway.
Does he know that he has to have a grease separator or whatever his, catch the grease and?
Yeah, I don't know that we actually require that. There could be a condition that we require, but I don't know that our ordinance actually requires that.
Seems like for, uh, other similar businesses that we've talked about in the past, we have acquired that.
Um, and, and we've, we've negotiated that, I think, and maybe Sav might remember some of the dealerships that we actually worked on. Certainly the larger dealerships typically always have that anyway, but we just reaffirm that they do. And that's just a good way to prevent seepage and, you know.
You've got a creek running by there too.
That's true, yeah. And I've made them aware that they, they know that.
They know that they may have to invest some money in that.
Yes.
So I have a question. So, so Jason, it's a rental, right? He's renting from the landlord.
He's renting on half the building now.
Yeah, so, and then my other question is, how long, was he, was that there before the heritage trail was there?
Oh, yeah.
Oh, yeah, so.
Before it was deemed to be a DNR sanctioned trail, yes.
So the building was there and the business?
The building's been there for some time.
And the businesses were there?
Yes.
So that. So then I would say it's very nice of him to agree to put a buffer on. Because in reality, he was there first.
Yeah, Mr., well, no, 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 he just purchased this property. I see what you're saying though.
Yeah, I mean, I think it's a good idea and I, I'm glad that he's agreeing to that, but, but he, he was there.
Well, that's, that's what your planner does. I mean, that's.
A good idea.
Part of my job, right.
Okay.
He knows there's people, you know, tourists and the like traversing that area. He now has cleared some area for, you know, laid out area for, let's say, landscape breaks and blocks and things like that. So I asked him and he agreed to screen it.
So that's nice, being a good community member then.
Yeah, he's a very young entrepreneur. Uh, he's pretty, you know, a go-getter and just trying to help him along.
Okay.
I, I don't know if it matters, Jason, just a typo, but, um, that Andrew Kilpela's name is misspelled in there. I believe there's not an L in there, it's Kilpela?
Kilpela.
In the application. And then this, in the, in the email, it's right, but then in, or no, it's not right in the email either.
Yeah, he probably just, uh, didn't know what's going. Yeah, it's K.I.E., K.I.L.P.E.L.A. Yard builders. Some of these first-time business starter-uppers, you know, they don't understand zoning. So we tend to wrangle them and get them to where they need to be legally so that they can operate legally. And I have sensitively coached Andrew to call me on anything he decides to do on the property.
Any more questions, your partner?
I'll make a motion to pass and schedule a public hearing for Wednesday, January.
January? I said February.
I said February? Oh, January, January, sorry.
I'll support that.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Posed? Six B, Renovari Development, final planned unit development application review on property located within the development district. For market township zoning ordinance. Jason.
Uh, you have in front of you an updated staff report. The first paragraph under the background was from a previous final PUD because as a planner, I go to that file and then just update it. And, um, I apologize for missing that detail. So, um, as you know, the department, our department has been working with Renovari Development to administer a proposed planning unit development, mixed residential use on township-owned property located at one seventy County Road four ninety-two. Beginning in twenty twenty-three, we met with Renovari's development team to review plan concepts and to share information. On the twenty-fourth of this year, they met with the planning commission to share ideas and concepts. No decisions were made. We just had a, a meeting and discussed their plans and our expectations. Um, and then on, um, August fourteenth, the planning commission held a public hearing on the preliminary PUD plan. And you passed that plan contingent upon a couple of items. One was, um, the inclusion of the buffer yard along the north side of the property, separating the two land uses, one less intense from the other being more intense, obviously in the commercial realm, and that a complete stormwater, um, plan be submitted. Uh, those items are included in this final revision, um, as well as some other massaging of the site that I think you'll find favorable. And I'll let, uh, either Megan or Sav speak to that. I've included in your staff report, you know, what requirements there are for the PUD, the final PUD. So it's a little bit more detail, every, kind of every step we take in these planning unit developments, there's a little bit more detail added. So in this case, um, the location and dimensions of all proposed structures and buildings are, have been included. The location of all proposed drives, sidewalks, radii, acceleration, deceleration lanes, et cetera, have been included. Signage and lighting, conceptually. Location type and size of all landscaping has been included, including the fences. Location type and size of all utility and storm drainage facilities has been included. Existing and proposed topographic contours, um, there is a grading plan in there. Elevation views of proposed structures and floor plans with dimensions and square footages have been included. And the proposed open space areas, including recreational amenities, although there's no playgrounds here. Um, I would include store, snow storage in that category as well, and that has been demonstrated.
That was an adjustment they made.
Yeah, significant, yeah. So in reviewing the final plan, the planning commission shall review the final PUD plan in its relation to the conformance with the preliminary plan, uh, and its conditions, if any. If it is determined that the final plan is not substantially in conformance with the preliminary plan, the review process shall be conducted as a preliminary PUD plan review. I don't think that's the case here. PUDs, whether established as a single or multi-phase development, this is a two-phase development, shall comply with the intent in each phase. And if the final plan is consistent with the approved preliminary PUD plan, the planning commission shall review the final plan in accordance with the standards for approval in section thirteen oh seven. So I've highlighted that as well for you below. And that lists essentially, um, the criteria in which you would review this. I guess going through, and I want to get on the phone, if you don't mind. Jill Ferrari, who I indicated I would call when this came up. Let's see how this works.
Hello?
Hi, Jill, this is Jason McCarthy and the Market Township Planning Commission and guests. How are you?
I'm fine, how are you?
Good, thank you. Um, we're just going through the staff report now, so I would ask you to stand by.
Okay.
I don't know if Megan or Brian, if you want to detail the changes. Obviously, the, the narratives that have been provided by Barry Poleson's office speak to the site plan changes. And then the letter from Renovari Development speaks to, um, I guess, just the, uh, the submission of the final PUD and some, some information on, um, financing and ownership intent, et cetera. So Megan, do you want to go through that?
Yeah, sure.
Here's a, you can't point on these LEDs, TVs, but you can, I have the entire document, so if you just go back and forth.
Sounds good. Thank you so much, Jason.
Yeah, so Jason did a pretty good recap of the changes that we have made based on the previous submittals. As you can see, on the whole north end of the property, we have, um, added the buffer yard that meets the requirements of the townships. Buffer yard is fifteen feet wide. Um, it's got a lot of, a lot of plantings in it. Um, and then we did shift, um, some of the three-bedroom houses and the two-bedroom houses so that we were able to pull the ones in the cul-de-sac further from the road to create more snow storage in the front yards of these units. Um, and we also needed to do that to get the buffer yard in the back, to get a little bit more space from the commercial structures. Um, and then we included a little bit of the light pole image. I know that came up on the last one of like some kind of look of what that would be like. Um, and then the townhomes had to shift a little bit closer to the road to allow the buffer yard in the back. But we were able to accomplish this and keep, um, the same right of way that we had prior in our prior submittal. Um, and you can see the fence, six-foot wooden fence along the whole north side of the property. Really create that privacy in that buffer yard. And then I'll let Sav talk about the changes we made up to the stormwater system. Well, not changes, but developed the plan, sorry.
Yeah, we, the concept was similar to the last time that I was here. We have two different catchment areas for the main storm drainage. The, the northern half gets collected in the streets. It's all drains towards the, towards the street. Uh, one thing that's changed is I did add redundant catch basins. Instead of having just one each at that, after going through my kelks again, it, one on each side is sufficient, but however, you do get clogging and sometimes with, with branches and things like that. So it's not a bad practice to do that. So, so I did add that. We've, uh, at one time, we looked at like a basin in this area and after going through the kelks, we decided to enlarge the bottom basin. So we underground to the rear of these townhomes right here. And then we have that rear perimeter ditch, which half of it's kind of naturally occurring. There's a little bit of a, there's a little bit of a ridge here between the county road and the backs here. So, so that's a shallower ditch. I didn't really even count that in the storm retention, even though it does retain some water. And I did it for the, the primary basin down here, which is enlarged quite a bit. Because I didn't necessarily account that. And I did want to use that in case there's some discussion of potentially putting some snow storage in here. Um, however, your ordinance doesn't allow that. So we have the snow storage area up to the north of that as well. And sometimes you do get a heavier runoff that you can't count for in your storm kelks. And that would help in, in collecting some of that.
An emergency situation.
Yeah, like in a, in a hard spring runoff sometimes, you know, you're, especially because the public systems are usually still froze. You know, if you at least have, have a basin area, you have a initial collection, so. So the, the storm plan worked out pretty good. I've got a, another sheet down here. These are actually all the storm kelks that will be in the, the final stormwater agreement too. That, uh, it's probably a lot of gumbly hook here, but, um, basically, this is the, the water that's coming in. It's almost five cubic feet per second as it does. And what happens is the basin down here starts filling up and you start to get some perk through the ground and that's what this point three is. And then there's an overflow to an existing stormwater system that's there. And we don't let any water to that in a hundred-year event or a fifty-year event. We would, uh, your ordinance requires to match what a fifty-year does. And a fifty-year does. Uh, point one-two cubic feet per second. But we don't release anything. We could allow a little bit of release if we wanted to. The hundred-year does point two CFS. So we could, by your ordinance, release one CFS off the site. But the basin is big enough, and I typically try and do this, is, uh, it's big enough to handle the hundred-year before it reaches the overflow, so. So it meets your ordinance and allows for, you know, at times you're getting sediment and things start developing here. You know, there, there is a final maintenance agreement. That'll be part of the final easements with the township will require you to clean those out. But it gives you some relief in a case of like, like that big storm in the spring might take a bunch of sediment into your basin. By having a little larger, you kind of plan it for one, one bad event, so. So it's, it's the same plan for the most part. Some minor grading change, but it's, uh, really the only difference is I made upon even bigger. And I think that's really it on the storm. And like Megan mentioned, we changed some of these buildings and moved that back further away from the, the snow. And, and that was a good idea and took that into account. We did the best we, we believe we could in terms of balancing where they fit with, with the buffer and the snow, so.
And I think the elevations of the structures themselves are the last.
Yep.
And if you want to detail any of those, they look great to me, um, typical cottage style.
Yeah, yeah, for sure. So Market Township, um, I think it's a little bit of, a little bit of a mix, you know? This downtown in the city, you get a lot of just that classical, steep roof, old, older homes. But here in Market Township, we have a nice blend of newer construction as well as moving into this more modern. Um, I would say current, um, the way cities are starting to look is some of this flat roof. Um, and so we've incorporated the flat roofs into the duplex in the townhomes, which are, which you see first on the site. So it gives you more of an urban feel. And then when you move back into the, um, more single-family detached homes, we've incorporated, um, a pitched roof. Give you that more traditional neighborhood that you see all over the township and City Market as well.
How, how do those flat roofs drain?
Um, they have internal drains.
Internal drains?
Yeah.
Into storm sewer? Sanitary?
They would go, I don't know, Sav, if we've got really that planned out in the.
No, I think right now it, they go to a roof drain, but they're all lit at like the foundation areas, so it's still coming in. You are.
Just like a gutter.
Handle by the, by the, um, the road drainage or anything else along the, the street. All of those surfaces are all taken into account in the drainage kelks when you're looking at.
Similar to how like our gutters function on a pitched roof. Daylight's up the side of the kelp.
Yeah, they would have to go if there was more of a stormwater system up that end, that they could go to. That's usually an ideal way to do it, but it gets costly to add that for a roof drain, so.
Great, thank you.
Yeah, for sure.
Plenty of questions. I guess with that, we would turn it over to you for any questions. Uh, staff has recommended, uh, that obviously review the review criteria, which is highlighted in your staff report. And make your findings there, as well as the conditions, qualifying conditions, which I think have been met. That's your discretion. I know that there was some back and forth via email today about some financial, uh, questions that were up. And I don't know if Denny, if you want to highlight those or get into a discussion about those. We do have Jill Ferrari from Renovari on the, on the phone, so make sure you're talking into your microphones, please.
Okay, and I'll talk loud. First of all, Jill, I want to thank you for responding to the questions that I asked today. I sent the email to Ju, to Jason, asked him to forward it to you, and within twenty minutes, you had the answers. They had to do with affordability, deed restrictions, financing, construction start date, and potential additional assistance from the planning commission, should the planning commission approve the final PUD. Uh, first of all, I was very pleased to see that even, uh, your current sales price estimates have forty units under three hundred thousand. And of these forty units, thirteen are under two hundred and twenty-five thousand in sale price and thirty-seven are, uh, under two hundred and fifty. I thought that was quite impressive. And, uh, Jason, if I'm not mistaken, I think the, has the legislature passed the law that requires a master plan to, uh, have a provision for providing for affordable housing?
A discussion on it, at least, yes.
Okay.
Yeah.
And I know from our preliminary, uh, uh, work, Bethany and Jim, myself.
Steering committee, yeah.
And the steering committee, uh, that has been a heavy emphasis in the master plan. And I believe over fifty percent of the residents that we surveyed, uh, said that affordable housing was one of their top priorities. So I just wanted to say that I, I'm, I'm very pleased with the way this is developing in terms of affordability. The other questions that I had that I thought, uh, were important to, to be answered. Apparently, uh, Jill, is it correct, you had a positive response from the Marquette, Brownfield Regional Authority?
We did. We had a discussion about the proposed plan, which is in draft form. And this plan has not been presented to the township board yet, just so everyone understands. Uh, we went through the BRA first because we wanted to make sure that the form was correct. We wanted to talk a little bit about administrative capture and some other pieces before we brought it to the township board. But that is our next step. Overall, there was general support for the project. Some items that the BRA still needs to decide are, um, uh, the specific amounts on the administrative fees. There was a suggestion made. I've incorporated that into the plan of a, of a flat fee amount. They've added an application fee. But they were generally in support of the, um, uh, you know, just the, the sales prices and the information that was provided in the plan. And, and their staff still has to do a detailed review. So we will be going to the township board next in the beginning of January. I'm working with Lynn Durant and Ann Giroux on setting a meeting, uh, within the first two weeks of January. And then we will be going back to the Brownfield Authority after that.
Will that be a meeting, uh, that the public can attend, or is that a private meeting?
Well, Ann was calling it a workshop, but I would assume that it would be public.
A workshop. I, I understand Lynn is here and she just gave me the pat of mind that it's going to be a workshop.
Yeah.
One of the things you mentioned, uh, that you want to square away with the township authority here is the length of capture, twenty-five years for eligible activities and five years for the local revolving fund. I'm sure this is something that you come up, uh, across and, or facile with in your business, but I don't really understand what that means. Can you explain that?
Yes, so, um, under the Brownfield Act, uh, under Act three eighty-one, um, there's a length of time that authorities are authorized to capture tax increment on projects. And, um, for this project, we are asking for pretty much the maximum amount allowed under the statute, or very close to it. We're asking to capture the increment that's generated by the new construction for twenty-five years to repay eligible activities. And then, um, for five years after that, the Brownfield Authority can capture certain taxes and deposit them into a local revolving fund that can be used for various purposes, but mostly for new Brownfield projects. And now that includes housing. As you all know, housing has been added as an eligible activity. And there's a calculation that is created depending on the project that really relates to the, um, amount of, uh, the development of each unit and what an affordable mortgage is for each unit. And the difference between the cost to construct and the affordable mortgage for that unit is a, um, a delta. And that amount becomes an eligible activity under the Brownfield Plan that you can capture for. And, um, Ann's going to be going through all of this information in this workshop with the township board, kind of going back to, you know, tax increment financing basics, talking about how the housing TIF program works and how the number of eligible activities was generated in the plan. And, um, MISHDA has to approve all of the proposed eligible activities in the capture period as well. So that is a, a review process within the program that's required. But we really want this to be an educational session, to talk about why this length of time is needed, um, what the benefits are to the township, what the administrative costs will look like for the BRA, and answer any questions that we can, um, about the proposed plan at that workshop.
Thank you. And then, uh, I, in response to one of my other questions, you indicated that you are on the agenda for the, for MISHDA's December nineteenth meeting. In a nutshell, what, uh, what do you hope to achieve in that meeting?
Yeah, um, and I do want to apologize. I know it, it, it definitely, um, has taken us a long time to get here. We had really hoped for a round one approval for My Neighborhood, which would have been earlier in the summer. However, um, because we hadn't gotten through this process tonight, this PUD approval process, MISHDA considered our application to be premature. So we missed out on a round of My Neighborhood, um, grant funding in the summer. That's why, you know, we've been a bit delayed in our process. But we're here now, and we were able to get through preliminary PUD, um, as you all know, before My Neighborhood, uh, round two was submitted in October. And, um, apparently with that, um, level of progress in the project, MISHDA felt comfortable, MISHDA staff felt comfortable making a recommendation for approval. So what is on the board agenda, as far as we understand, what's on the board agenda for, um, December nineteenth is a recommendation for approval of the award that we have requested, which is one point three million. And at that point, if we receive the award approval from the MISHDA board, then we will get a series of documents. We will get a proposed grant agreement with compliance requirements. And these documents will set forth how we secure the affordability. Whether it is, um, deed restrictions, which is within the site condominium documents, or a second mortgage, it'll give us the guidance that we need to draft documents for, um, the township staff to review.
Thank you. And then, uh, one of the other questions I asked is, what, if anything, could you share with us about any solid commitments for funding, uh, financing, and down payment assistance? And you responded that term sheets have been received from Nicolay Bank and Sineer Bank for all debt required, and from a private investor for equity. I guess that's a good, a good sign, right?
Yes, we worked for ten months with Nicolay and Sineer Bank. Sineer is, is not, um, doing, has not been very prevalent up in the Upper Peninsula. Um, and so they were very excited to work with a local bank like Nicolay to develop a unique program of funding for this project. So these two lenders, one Nicolay Bank is a, a commercial bank, local to the area, used to doing commercial projects. And Sineer, which is a community development financial institution, um, that is doing more social impact projects, affordable housing projects. They have come together and over this ten-month period, figured out how to do a joint loan product where Nicolay is senior and Sineer is junior, and, um, created a partnership in order to provide the construction lending for this project. So it's the first time that something like this has been done. And I think it's, it's great that, um, local banks are starting to develop, uh, products that are unique for affordable housing. And bringing in partners that will help mitigate their risk, which is exactly what Sineer is doing. So after ten months, we were able to develop a pro forma that everybody was comfortable with, at rates that everybody was comfortable with, and, uh, were able to get through committee to get term sheets for the, for the loans. And all we've been waiting for is the My Neighborhood grant.
Thank you. And then, uh, another question I had is whether or not you had any preliminary contact or, uh, terms of agreement, uh, with, uh, any construction company? And you indicated that you have contacted Hall Construction Company. Is that, where, where is Hall Construction from? Where are they located?
They are, they have offices in Munising and Marquette. And, uh, we have been working with them on pricing, um, for the, uh, site work and, um, a lot of the finish work that needs to be done. And the pricing for the units themselves, because they're modular, is coming from Champion. And we've been working with a group called the Nova Lab that has been, um, coordinating that pricing with Champion. And we touch base with them about every month to make sure that, uh, pricing and delivery dates are still current.
Great, thank you. And then finally, assuming hypothetically that, uh, the planning commission votes tonight to approve your, uh, final PUD plan, uh, what, if anything, can the planning commission do, um, following that to provide any assistance to you? And I'm thinking of perhaps a press release. Uh, Jason is good at press releases, I know that. And, uh, he's shaking his head. And, uh, uh, you know, maybe letters of support or anything like that. If there's anything like that, we, you know, that we can do, assuming that we do approve this, uh, please let us know.
I really appreciate that. We want to make sure that Marquette Township is supportive of the project, even though it has taken us so long to get here. One of the very large challenges in the Upper Peninsula is the lack of gap financing sources for housing projects. I, I don't have to tell you guys this. And so My Neighborhood became a critical piece to the project, and not getting awarded in the first round was very disappointing and, and set us back. But, um, we just want to make sure that, um, the township is supportive of the project. And any support the planning commission can give the township board to support, uh, the project in general and the approval of the Brownfield Plan, um, is, is really appreciated. Getting one point three million in My Neighborhood awarded to Marquette Township will be a big win because it is a very competitive program, really competitive. So we, we, we would appreciate any and all of the above things that you mentioned, um, for sure.
Okay, thank you. I have no further questions.
I guess I'd just like to add, Jill, while you're still on the phone, um, we realized that, um, and I received a call from the My Neighborhood Grant Coordinator, uh, asking when, uh, the final PUD would be approved. And I said, well, it'll be up for approval, uh, on December eleventh. And, and he was talking about how tight that timeline was to when their meeting was. But if the project was approved, that he was confident that, um, that the grant award would move forward. I didn't give any indication, obviously, whether it would be approved or not, but just gave him the timeline in which that would occur. And we also realized, you know, from the planning commission's perspective, this is just a, a zoning exercise at this point. The heavy lifting, if you will, and the, uh, the financing package will have to be deliberated by the township board. At this point, it's really a zoning project. Once you're able to put the complete package together, you can go to bat with the board and, and, you know, the length of the TIF and all that stuff. Hopefully it shakes out to be beneficial to, uh, our community. But, um, from my perspective, and, and my perspective only, I really appreciate, um, all of the hard work that you've done. I know it's, uh, I know it's been quite, um, a challenge. And we attended, uh, a pavilion, uh, construction update by some students at Northern and didn't realize, uh, all of the impacts and people that were involved in that little project. So I can only imagine all the players that are involved here and, um, appreciate your hard work. So with that, I turn it back over to the planning commission for their continued deliberations.
I had just a couple of quick questions. I'm sure, Jason, you looked at the lighting. Is the lighting poles shining down, or are they?
It's downcast, yeah, the light.
I kind of think I saw it.
Yeah, it's kind of an artsy thing. Uh, we might be able to work something out that's a little bit different. I'm sure we could put whatever we want there. But it is downcast.
Okay. And then, um, you mentioned that it was a site condo. Do you guys have an idea of like what your HOA fees will be for these?
Jill, do you have any idea, a question from Commissioner Cody. Do you have any idea what your HOA fees are going to be?
So we're still putting those budgets together. It will take a minute, um, before we'll have those finalized. The HOA fees on the site condo side, um, we try to keep those as low as possible. So, uh, this is going to be two separate phases or condos. The site condo will be the detached cottages and the duplexes where the entire yard is part of the homeowner element. And then the attached townhouses will be a traditional condominium. The fact that the road is private is going to make those fees a little higher than you'd see in our other affordable housing developments. But overall, uh, we're going to do everything we can to keep those fees as low as we can so that we can make sure that the housing costs meet the affordability standards of the pros, the programs we're using. But as soon as we have more information, um, one of the things that has been driving fluctuations in our, um, condo fees and our other projects is insurance. The cost for insurance for, um, homeowners associations has gone through the roof. So we've been, um, trying to competitively bid insurance packages. We've been successful. We were very successful in our Ypsilanti project. But yeah, so there's some costs that are kind of driving this project. And as soon as we have more details, we'll be happy to share.
There are requirements through the My Neighborhood grant that you'll be required to follow for affordability, is that correct?
Yes, absolutely.
I have a couple of questions. I guess we're sad. What, uh, what's the lane or what's the width of the, uh, street?
It's twenty, twelve-foot lanes and then a foot and a half curb on each side. So whether three, twenty-nine feet from back curb to back curb. And then we have, uh, five-foot sidewalks on each side as well.
So then, I'm assuming with that, you, you'll be parking a lot on each side of the street?
Um, we're not planning on parking on the street. The driveways are deep enough to allow for that. And then in the condo area, we have the parking lot in the rear of the condo. So there's no planned parking on the street.
I was thinking more for like gas, people not stop by to visit.
Yeah, there's room there to be able to do that and get, you know, like a typical, you know, township or city street that's narrower with older construction, yeah. It's adequate space to do that. But it's not planned. We don't, we don't call a parking though on the street.
Okay, but there would be, there was enough room to park.
Yeah, and the other thing too, in, in cases like that, when you get people at your house because the sidewalks, the tat, the curb is like a, a blacktop, monable curb that goes up to the sidewalk. So technically, you know, you actually have more hard surface there and you'll probably see situations like that. We see that a lot when we do a rolled street like that.
Is the drive going around the back of the townhouse? Is that going to be one-way or is there?
That's two-way. It's twenty-four-foot maneuvering lane, and then it has the, the parking on each side. It meets your typical parking lot requirements. So that's the way that was designed.
And then they're all individual garbage cans? There won't be any dumpsters there?
Yeah, it's all individual, yep.
Typical neighborhood.
Yeah, so, and even for the attached condos, because they put that either out the back door or the front door of the, you know, I'm sure they'll work that out with their provider.
And I, I didn't notice any room in any of them for any washer dryer setup or hookup? Is, is, there not going to be anything in there?
I believe we have washer and dryer rooms planned. A lot of the units had room for basements. And I think you were pointing to these on majority.
Yeah.
The duplexes I know had basements, um, and so the washer and dryer would be in the basement.
There will be basements in some, but not all?
Yeah, I think the townhomes did not have a plan for, um, basements, but there will be room in the unit to have a washer dryer. I think it's that closet near the back. I can't see. But they're planned to have washer dryers in units. A little laundry. A little laundry there.
But all the units will have hookups for?
Yes.
At least. And then some in the basement, okay.
Yeah.
And so the units that don't have basements, they can't, or where?
Like, we have some of the closet spaces noted on the plans. These, like if you see here on the three-bedroom townhouse, there's a big closet where water and air purifiers are in the back.
You have old clean townhouses where you have the washer dryer, the basements where they're.
Yep, so they were like planted back kind of under the staircase there. They didn't have the basement stairs. It would be in this space. One goes down, one goes up. And if there's no down, then there are that upstairs space.
In the landscape plan, you're showing trees in the snow storage area, but I'm assuming those wouldn't be in that snow storage area now, since you designated that for snow storage?
If we can get back there, Jason, I don't know if we can swap back to the landscape plan to see these trees.
Sorry.
You know, I thought they were planted closer along the street, but I know we were keeping them in the property. Yeah, there was three trees there. You can maneuver them and you can still get snow around them. We were just trying to get a little bit more of that street tree space or you weren't just looking at the driveway next to a road.
Will that six-foot fence be on that eastern edge?
No.
Just down the north and south?
Just the north.
And west? North, south, and west?
North.
Just north? Okay.
Yeah, the west is that huge retaining wall for?
Walmart.
Walmart.
And the south is a park, so I don't know if you want to keep people out of the park or not.
Yeah, it's extremely wooded there and everything, so.
So I have a question. I have a question. Yeah, all right. So there was lots of discussion because there's currently what people use as a road and it really is not a road. And so that will not be there, is that correct?
That is correct.
Okay, so, right. I just wanted to be real sure about that because.
Probably be a little shocked at first.
Well, I think it will become the township's responsibility, if all this moves forward, to let our residents know and we can spin it very positively.
Yeah. And that was never designed as an outlet to those businesses.
I know that, but I think people decide what they decide.
Yeah, exactly.
Yeah, but it, you know, it'll be great. And I love the little sidewalk that kind of curves through the snow place that goes out and, yeah, so people can cross.
Yeah.
So we'll make sure, hopefully, we get some signage up there about crosswalks kind of thing, so.
Thankfully, the traffic is pretty slow there because there's a stop sign and then anybody coming up and broken.
Yeah, so that's a nice walking path for sure in there. I am very excited about being one of the leaders, I'll call it, in our community to do some housing like this. I think, I think thank you to lots of people for moving this forward. Thank you to Denny for bringing it and thank you for all of us for looking at it. And, yeah, I think it's needed and.
Absolutely.
Yeah.
It's definitely been massaged and come a long way.
Yeah.
Jason?
Yes?
There's, and I don't want to throw a wrench in anything, but Supervisor Durant brought up some of her concerns about the design and some issues. And one thing she noted, and this was at the Brownfield meeting earlier this week, one thing she noted was the lack of storage. I don't want to derail our process, but in one of our other developments, we have the ability in our condo documents for owners to add sheds. We want to be able to allow homeowners to add sheds at their own expense and just wanted to make sure that that didn't need to be depicted in the site plan documents. But just wanted to have a discussion about this because it's, I'm sure if it doesn't come up tonight, someone's going to ask at some point, you know, where are people putting their lawnmowers and their snow shovels and everything? So it is something that we would like to incorporate into the project. And just wanted to get your feedback on that.
Yeah, we allow accessory structures in the township, so that shouldn't be an issue on an individual basis. We do have some setback requirements for those, but I think we can reasonably accommodate them in a situation where you have, you know, higher density. Again, this is an innovative development that would not otherwise be able to be constructed through conventional zoning. And it's one of the tenants of the zoning ordinance that allows a development like this. So I think we're cognizant of that and we would work with those residents to accommodate their needs.
Wonderful. And we do have models. We've selected, you know, just kind of basic models from Home Depot and we're requiring that they be painted in, you know, in alignment with, you know, the rest of the development. But just wanted to make, we didn't want to derail this process, but wanted to make sure that we plan for the opportunity for home buyers to be able to add that storage because it's going to be critical.
Yep. Yeah, I think also having them be required to be in the rear yard would be helpful as well.
Yep, and we can incorporate all of that into the site condominium documents with your guidance.
Would there be a maximum size for those accessory structures that would be allowed in there?
I would, 10 by, 10 by 10 kind of thing, eight by 10?
Most of those would fit right on the ends of the drives.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah, maybe even require them to be at the end of the driveway or something.
Maybe into rare and meat setbacks, everything would be good. Those drives all stop a little short to the backs of the building.
Maybe we'll have another storage unit development come out of this too. Anything else from the Planning Commission?
Steve, you're good?
Yeah, I'm good.
Done? Bethany?
I'm good.
Okay. Make a motion to approve the final planned unit development PUD application as stated in item 6B of the agenda and to recommend its adoption by the township.
I'll support that.
For the discussion?
Do a roll call on this one.
Figure that. Okay, roll call vote. Steve Hakinen?
Yes.
Jim Ferraro?
Yes.
Bethany Cody?
Yes.
Jim Johnson's a yes. Linda Winslow?
Yes.
Okay, great.
Jill and Megan, Sav and Barry and the rest of your team, congratulations on this part of the process. You have an approved PUD. Obviously, you know that a PUD agreement is required and that's something that you can wrestle with the Township Board. That's above our pay grade at this point, so. Congratulations and we look forward to seeing this, I guess, move forward and get it to where you need it to be.
Thank you so much for all of your help and we look forward to seeing you all, I do in person in January. And we're just very grateful for all of your support.
All right, thank you, Jill. Have a good night.
Happy holidays.
You too. Merry Christmas.
Thank you all.
Thank you. Great work.
Thank you.
Okay, succeed draft. Charter Township of Marquette, Blight and Property Maintenance Ordinance Discussion. Jason?
Yes. What you have before you is a draft Marquette Township Blight and Property Maintenance Ordinance. This has the official Township Attorney's seal of approval and is ready to be adopted. Of course, this would be a standalone ordinance. This would not become part of the zoning ordinance, so should you see it fit, you would recommend to the Board that it become adopted. I just wanted to highlight some of the, I guess, first of all, one of the most difficult things to determine when you have a blight ordinance is what is blight, right? Because somebody's junk to you is somebody's treasure to them. And so I think that this ordinance does a good job of identifying what junk is, what we don't want to see outside of the home that shouldn't be outside of the home. It covers vehicles, nuisances, building materials, structures, and thinking about some of the structures along Conner Road 550. No, nothing against them, but there are some structures that could be approved upon and this is the mechanism that allows us to do that. If you move on to the duties of the code official, that's not really anything new, but what I wanted to, I guess, touch on a little bit is penalties enforced, which is all the way in Section 8. And it says cost of corrective action. So let's just say we go through a process with somebody, they don't clean it up. One of the things that we don't have currently is the ability to recoup the cost of corrective action. And this provides us the ability to hire a contractor or contractors of our choice, which kind of removes the procurement policy that we're currently under on a particular property. We have somebody that we'd like to hire, they provided us with a bid, but we're required to get three bids. And right now, we're trying to schedule a site visit because these other contractors want to know what they're bidding on. And so that takes coordination of the Sheriff's Department because they should be there as well to protect the staff planner and anybody going out there to investigate the property. This kind of speeds up that process and I'm pretty happy with it. Everything's based on civil infractions again, which is the way that MTA recommends townships to be as far as enforcement activities. And I think, you know, we had a pretty good skeleton put together. Roger really did a great job of filling in kind of the meat and potatoes of what we were looking at. So there's, you know, it goes in Section 7, it talks about notices for corrective action. That gives you the exact criteria which you guys were asking for before as far as what kind, you know, we'll all know what process we're following here. And I know this summer we had it in the budget to actually have a code enforcement official such as a former police officer or the like. And we weren't able to get that person hired this year, but we do anticipate that occurring in the spring. So it'd be very helpful to have this document, something that we can all identify with and be on the same page with as far as enforcing blight and property maintenance concerns. So staff is hopeful that you'll move this forward to the Township Board and get it adopted. Be happy to answer any questions.
Does this have to go to the county? Is this the type of thing we have?
No, this is a, they call it a police ordinance or a board ordinance, so it's pretty immediate. They can just adopt it.
And my other question is, if it's adopted, would it be retroactive to apply to the problem property that we have?
Unfortunately, no. But the current cases that we have or primary case that we have is still adjudicated already, if you will. We have the right to go in and do it. We just have to follow our current procedure. So effectively, you know, with the way that things are right now, the snow that's falling tonight, it may be spring before we even get out there. And that requirement for us to get three bids really held us up because we were ready to hire somebody to go out there. And we asked our attorney if that was possible to just do that and he said, no, we should really get three bids. So this, the moving forward will allow us to just pick somebody and go with it and get it done. And then it also, if you read through it, has the, an assessment on the taxes too for the cost. So that's a way when the property sells or passes on to somebody else, township gets recouped before anybody else does.
And it also allows a judge to impose additional monetary civil contempt penalties regardless of any penalties imposed by the township.
I wouldn't hang our hats on that happening, but that is a possibility for sure, according to this document.
All right, let me ask you a few questions concerning junk vehicles. So who's to determine if it's a junk vehicle?
It would be myself or Eric.
Okay, let's say, oh, it's like the tires are kind of flat, but it looks like it got tires, motor grates, that kind of stuff. It's not a junk vehicle. Somebody's allowed to store on the property.
Yeah, that's one concern I had too, Steve, is that there's no determination of the amount of vehicles. But I think, you know, operable has to be able to start up. I dealt with this in Ashland a little bit. I actually physically said, you know, can you start the vehicle? Does it drive? Can you show me how it does that?
Okay, and then I thought Roger had some concerns that you were taking, you know, there were titles involved with vehicles. What gives you the right to take someone's vehicle?
Good question, yeah. Titles?
Your line in the ordinance says that removal of junk vehicles shall be handed under the applicable law for abandoned vehicles. What does that mean?
That's a state law.
And what does that law state?
I don't have that information with me, Steve, but I can get that to you.
Because I'm concerned that, you know, I can look at those cars and those cars will be there forever. Because I'll say, ooh, man, there's a titled vehicle and it's like, you know, it's got air in the tires and, you know, or it does or it doesn't. And I mean, I mean, so any part where the residence could have 12 cars on his property that can start and move back and forth and there's no, nobody has anything to say about that?
You're welcome to.
No, I'm obviously, does our residential, definition of residential lot allow somebody to have 12 vehicles on their property that are all running? Just throw it out in the yard?
Do they have to be licensed, registered, and operable?
It doesn't say licensed in here.
Well, we can make it say licensed.
Because you're saying.
And registered.
It has to be, where's the definition? Has four wheels, tires, a working battery, engine operating condition, has a gear tray installed so it can go backwards and forwards, and has all its main components installed. Most of the doors are on it. It doesn't say anything about being licensed.
Okay, I appreciate your comments, Steve, the way they're coming across.
Except for licensing and ensuring.
So this is a draft, Commissioner Hakinen, and you can make recommendations to change the draft if you like? You don't have to.
I think that should be made much stronger. And I think there should be some, somewhere where cars can't be stored, you don't have to be stored in a building. If you have a residential lot, you can't have more than two licensed vehicles or three licensed vehicles or 12 licensed vehicles. There's got to be some kind of number. Otherwise, it just, it just doesn't matter. I mean, what can you do about it? You can't, you can't take my car. That's my grandmother's car. I love my grandmother. Can't take her car. Or the, it doesn't say anything about titled vehicles either. You don't even have to have the title to a vehicle.
Well, if you look at item C, the definition of junk.
Yeah.
It says, "Any abandoned, discarded, unstable, or unused objects or equipment, including but not limited to." And that has a bunch of stuff that talks about car parts and so forth. But you could, you could very well argue that, you know, if you go out there and take a picture of the, take a picture of the car with one of those apps that date in time and you take it another month, two weeks later, same thing, two weeks later, the same thing, still there, still there, still there, you could say it's junk.
Or you can say that I would like to drive my MG when it's over at 80 degrees when I can put the top down too. I mean, it doesn't say you have to move your car around to not make it junk. Well, I'm just saying, I don't think there's any strength in this at all.
Well, I know, look, I mean, so let's just say it had to go for a judge. And you brought the judge a picture of a yard that had eight vehicles in it and you had date and timestamp photos of December through November, you know. photos of December through November, you know. Pretty clear, those are junk. It's blight.
So has the judge in this case seen photos of these junk cars out there, or non-junk cars? He's already seen those images.
And he entered orbit, right?
But he can't. Roger said, you can't take this car, you can't take this car.
He doesn't have titles to all the cars, Steve, if you really want to drill into it.
So it could be somebody else's car you're taking?
But there are different laws for vehicles in Michigan, and, yeah, you do have to treat vehicles differently.
I'll tell you what, I'll assume that this is going to work just fine, and I want to see the proof in the pudding. So by next December, I say, man, those cars are all, this is all cleaned up out here. Then I'll, then I'll believe that something, something is...
I'm not believing your sarcasm, but...
Sarcasm?
Oh, okay.
I'm not believing your sarcasm in your comment. What I'm asking...
Oh, it's not sarcasm, that's fact.
Okay.
We've drummed out this thing for...
Do any of the other planning commissioners feel the same that this could use a revision? And if so, would you like me to send it back to Roger based on the commentary made tonight?
Well, you know, is there a, is there an ordinance that, you know, that's a good point, though.
Our current property maintenance ordinance indicates that you cannot have more than one unlicensed, unregistered, or inoperable vehicle.
Or then what?
More than one.
Or, or what? You can't have it, therefore, this is going to happen. What does the ordinance say is going to happen?
Well, that's, we're in the process of that right now.
No, 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 that's a separate, that's a separate ordinance we're talking about. You said you can't have more than one unlicensed vehicle on property, or what?
I'm trying to distinct the two documents from what the current one says and what this one says.
Okay.
The current one regarding vehicles is actually more restrictive than this one is.
And what good is that doing?
Well, in your neighbor's case, not very much so far.
Right, because it's not played on a lot of those cars.
Okay, so then they shall be removed because they're not licensed or registered.
I thought Roger had concern about vehicles taking someone's vehicles.
He does, and that is to follow the state law.
And where are those cars going to be put? Where are they going to be stored? Are they going to go right to the crusher?
I have no idea.
I mean, I'm just looking at the practical aspects of this. This is all really good, this is lovely text, but what's, what's the practicality of it? I don't see it.
So, so I, I too noted that the junk vehicle thing, and I too noted how many we can have, but if we change some of the wording on here that says they have to be licensed, I don't know that you can say they have to be insured.
No, licensed, registered.
Or registered.
If it's registered, then it's insured.
Well, yes and no. They cancel the insurance after it gets through the process, after they, but whatever, Jason, whatever.
No doubt.
Yeah, so, so I have a concern too, because in our neighborhood, there are many, many cars in a yard, and I don't think they've been moved, but then they might have, like my parents did, five children who were all driving, had our own cars, plus my mom and my dad, so there were seven operable cars that moved. So I think, you know, there's a way to make this work, and I think if they're sitting as they are on Wright Street, I'm not picking on anyone, but, you know, somebody has what he would consider art in his front yard on Wright Street, and those are maybe operable, I don't know. I mean, it, I don't know, but I think we need to kind of figure that out so it works. And I do know people have cars that they're working on, and they may or may not have them in a garage, but they usually have them covered if they're working on them, so how can we make this work?
In the case that those, all major repairs occur inside of a building.
So major repairs, but people push cars in and out of buildings when they're not repairing them. So we, we don't want to punish the majority of the people if they have three cars in their yard.
Right.
Right? But we don't want people to have seven cars that don't work and have flat tires and no batteries in the neighborhood, so it's a...
Part of the distinction was junk cars from operable cars.
Yeah, so, so I too think we might want to fix that a little bit, but Roger might know.
Yeah, there's no hurry. I can relay our comments tonight, including Commissioner Hakinen's comments, and I did have a concern about there being no specific number of junk vehicles.
Yeah.
Or, not junk vehicles, let's say, inoperable or unregistered.
Unused?
No, that's, that's nebulous.
Okay.
Right?
Okay.
But if it's unregistered or inoperable, or unli, unregistered, yeah, then it doesn't have insurance, and, you know, those are subject to being removed. I mean, there's a situation on County Road 550 where one of the haulers is just bringing cars to a property on 550 and dropping them off, and it's constantly a moving, it's, it's wild. So, yeah, there's no hurry on this, guys.
And, you know, since you're talking about, what about these blighted properties, you know, or, or structures that are going to ground? What can be done about those?
I think this covers that, and I was really pleased with that.
I mean, but, I mean...
Siding...
Yeah, I understand the definition of what a blighted structure is, but what, what, who has the authority to tell them to fix it?
This does.
And then what if they don't?
Well, then you have to follow the rules.
There's penalties.
Yeah.
Yeah, and I'm really looking forward to coordinating our ordinance with the county, because in my opinion, the county has a bigger hammer than we do, although, you know, we really haven't pressed any buildings to be taken down with them yet, other than the one on, yeah, the one on the south side of the lake.
Yeah, I mean, it's collapsing, it's collapsing. So, I mean, that'd be a perfect test case for this.
Yeah, you know, I wish that we had $500,000 sitting in a pot of money, that we could just go out there and take them down, take the materials out to a recycle site, and assess that property with whatever it costs, and that would make that property redevelopment ready.
Has anybody ever...
But that's not going to happen.
Has anybody said anything to the property owner about it?
Yes.
And what has he said?
We've delivered letters.
And what has he, what has his response?
No response.
Okay.
Is there any interval limit as to how many cars you can own and keep on your property?
No. What if I was a car collector and I had a 40 by 70 garage and it was filled with cars?
Or Porsches?
Yeah, Ferraris.
Well, that's even better.
None of my favorite, maybe a couple Volkswagen's.
But, so you can buy as many cars as you want, and you can keep them stored in your yard, all over your yard, wherever you want them?
I think they have to be in buildings.
That's one, okay, so here's the difference between the city and the township, okay? The city does not allow that.
Right.
The township does, and so far, the township likes to keep its rural character and keep your, you know, hands off my property kind of thing. You're talking about city-type ordinance stuff now. There's one particular property off of Wright Street that has his RV, travel trailer, parked just off the road in his front yard. And because he's on a corner, he's got two front yards. There's nothing in our ordinance that prevents that. In Ashland, we had, if you park an RV on your property, you must have an improved surface, gravel, asphalt, concrete. We don't have anything like that. If you want to get into that kind of stuff, that can be put in here, but so far, we haven't gotten there yet. And remember, this needs to go to the board, too, so they're going to have to concur with what you come up with. I don't really have a problem with vehicles not being able to be parked in the front yard, but this is the township, it's not the city of Marquette.
What, we, what does that mean? What does it mean, this is a township? What, are we a bunch of hillbillies living out here? I don't, I don't, I don't even get that attitude. I mean, you know, we have some nice homes, Daddy's got a nice home, I'm sure he wouldn't want a partner next to him that has cars in his yards like that. I mean, you know, you know, we're not toothless out here, Jesus. You know, we're educated folks, we have, you know, live in a rural character, but that doesn't mean people can have, you know, cars and crap in their yards because we live in a rural area. Holy moly.
But that's the intent of, of changing our blight ordinance?
I know, but with an attitude like that, I mean, I don't even get it.
Wow.
It's not an attitude, it's fact.
It's a fact, and your mind is a fact. Steve, Steve, let's just keep it down.
Trying to have a discussion, Steve.
I'm trying to have a discussion, too, but when you say that we don't have to have that because we're a rural character out here...
I didn't say we don't have to have it, I said we don't currently require that.
Well, I think we should.
Okay, well, let's talk about something we can work on. That's what we're discussing right now.
I'm going to die before he does stuff his soul.
So, so do we want to, do we want to bring some things back? Or do we want to rediscuss this?
I mean, I understand what you're saying with the rural character of it.
Not the rural character, it's just...
Not as many ordinances as the city has, and...
Correct.
As Nick Vicki, and I understand what you're saying, you're getting that.
Most properties are larger.
But some people can abuse it because there aren't any of those, you know, and that's kind of the issue with what he's having, and, you know, if you can, if there's no limit as to how many vehicles you can have on your property, then...
Some people desire to live out here because we don't have those rules.
I absolutely understand. So there's a fine line there, you know, as to, you know, what you want to do, and...
Let's take a look at the community survey, specifically with regard to questions about property maintenance, and let's, let's revisit that for our next meeting. And then let's put this all together and have it ready, let's say, obviously before spring, but I'm saying we can have it ready by March, with some revisions that touch on the topics that we've been discussing.
You know, when I looked at this, I'm not, I'm no longer an attorney, and that license is deprived of any, but as a layman, who used to be an attorney, I think this is a good ordinance, very broad, but very specific, and maybe needs for a little more specificity regarding the number of inoperable vehicles, or whatever, you know, whatever it is, you can rather touch it, but it seems like a good ordinance, you know.
Yeah, I'd like to see a little bit more blend of the BOKA, which is the, the building codes, kind of older document that we've been using for property maintenance in, in this.
But it's a matter of discretion, too, in the enforcement, because I've got some pieces of satellite dishes that I disassembled and laid against my garage. If anybody comes down my driveway and looks at it, they can say, oh, that's junk, get rid of it. I mean, that's kind of a ridiculous thing, but there's, there's a certain amount of discretion that the township would use in enforcing this, right? The inspectors, you.
Absolutely, yeah.
But you don't, you don't do anything about unless there's a complaint, is what I...
Today, that's correct.
Yeah, but you'll, you'll get some complaints, you'll get some neighbors who want to...
Well, some are legitimate and some are...
Yeah, you know, they will deal with those.
And, and remember, you know, Trowbridge has smaller lots, and people, people do put junk out, and, you know, I don't know. I do know there is a washer and dryer in someone's front yard, spent there all for a very long time, and, you know, neighbors are unhappy, they've called. So Trowbridge is smaller, too, and it's harder to hide your stuff, and there is a residence that used to have a fence up, and the fence fell down, so now you can see all the junk. And people do think they can have multiple campers, trailers, boats, whatever, in small yards. And, you know, I, I understand that we're not the city of Marquette, but we are moving toward wanting things to be different than they were when I grew up here. Okay, so when I grew up, everybody had their stuff everywhere, and, you know, everybody had a dog running around, and, you know, nobody, you know, we ran the streets, right? It's not like that now, and people are building big expensive houses, and they want it to look nicer. There's nothing wrong with change.
Yeah, I agree.
Yeah. And, you know, we created beautiful subdivisions, we're creating plots where people can buy condos, we don't want them putting their washer and dryer in the front yard. I don't want that. But I did have a sand lawn for many years, but so did all my neighbors. So, you know, I think we just have to find that, that point, and then we have to have people to enforce it. So there's a cost to all of this that we don't even talk about. You know, we have to pay someone to enforce the rule we're going to make.
Well, it'll, it'll come back with a lien, with fines.
I know, but that takes a long time, and, you know, we have to upfront the money, I'll say, as the township, and, you know, Jason doesn't have the time in the summer to do that.
We'll make time, and staff will bring you back a better ordinance than we provided you with.
What's the cliche, don't let the perfect get in the way of the good.
Yeah, and I don't think it's a bad ordinance, Jason, and I think everyone's doing a fine job, and I think we just have to come to the middle and all kind of do the best we can and wait till the township board gets it, okay?
The sad realization is that we've taken this one person to court, and the judge has said, yeah, clean that up, and he doesn't clean it up.
Yeah.
So then we go back to court, and the judge says, well, give him a longer to clean it up.
I know.
And then he doesn't clean it up, and that, it just gets, you know...
It's frustrating.
It is very frustrating, because there's nothing more that I want is to appease Commissioner Hakinen and the issue that he's dealing with, but there are administrative hoops that regardless of how high you bring it up the ladder, you know, we're kind of hamstrung a little bit, too.
It's the way the world works.
We've already cleaned the property up once, and now it's back almost to the original, if not worse, condition.
Yeah, well...
So sometimes it's a behavioral issue on the property owner, but we'll keep plugging them in.
Okay.
Well, it seems to me that the biggest issue is the vehicles, and, you know, what are you going to do about that, and, you know, the other, the other part of it is kind of easy to do with the houses, and, you know, fixing up, or, you know, whatever, but vehicles are the biggest issue.
Can we, can we conditionally approve this with, in part, and leave that one segment about the number of vehicles for Roger to tinker with, and then you can just bring that part back to it?
I think we should just wait.
Yeah, I would recommend that we just approve the whole thing that we agree on at that time. So, yeah, thanks for your input.
All right. So, number seven, unfinished business, none at this time, correspondence, none at this time, stole?
No.
Okay. Township Board Report, Mr. Winslow.
Well, that's exciting, you know, we haven't met for a long time. That means we went through three board meetings since I reported, so I'm going to try and be quick here, okay? The last board meeting, for the most part, was about approving the budget, approving some other financial stuff that needs to get approved, and approving increases in wages, and those were all approved, and I did not attend that meeting either because I was in sunny Florida, but I listened, and so that's good. So if you guys ever want to listen, we can make sure you get the number so you can listen to the meeting. It's much better with our new technology. So, at the November 6th meeting, which was the meeting before the one I missed, we did have a report from Tim Sholander, he's the Upper Peninsula Substance Enforcement Team person, and I did bring along his PowerPoint, if anyone wants it, and I think we talked about getting that and putting it on our website, but if not, here's the 2003 report. We also, at that particular meeting, thanked Mike Springer, he's retiring from the boards that he's been on here, and he's been a valuable member of many of the boards and lots of the recreational things he was very active in getting going. So, the other meeting was before that, and I think that what we talked about at that particular meeting, or the November 20th meeting, we talked about funding some tools for the fire department, extrication tools, which are really important, and we talked about John Marks no longer being on our board after the election, and so we did thank him publicly, and we added a new board member, John Leighton, who is sitting in the back with his hat over his eyes, so we can't really see him much, but anyway, so he's our newest board member, and thanks Lynn and John for coming, and Rob Sved, who is the DDA person, chairman, also came tonight, and the DDA is doing some exciting... exciting things, um, with, um, connecting some of our walking paths, and being a huge advocate, along with Lynn, um, in the pursuit of the VA facility, and maybe Jason can talk if he's heard anything about that.
Nothing new.
Nothing new. I have, I think they have to, um, do something by the end of the year to get their money.
Yeah, they intend, I think the Simba's side plan sometime over the course of the winter, um, everything was kind of predicated upon the, uh, realign of the right of way.
Okay, so which, um, I think the county is agreeing to some of that?
Yeah, I don't think they had enough reason not to.
Okay, so the road will change for those of us who travel it every day, multiple times? There are about six or 700 of us that do that? I know, that's amazing. So, that's what I had. And we have a new, uh, trailhead going up, and the people from, um, Building Soil and Diverting Waste also came and talked about how you can get, um, I guess I could call it a membership, so they would pick up your waste and recycle it into compost for a fee. It wasn't really expensive. If you're good at grant writing, you'll probably get a grant to get it done. Okay, any questions? Thanks for listening to me.
Uh, Rec Committee report?
Yeah, the Rec Committee will meet next Tuesday to go over, uh, community survey results.
Roll Committee?
Roll Committee will not be meeting any longer as they have been disbanded by the Township Board.
Okay. Who's gonna take care of the roll?
The Roll Commission.
Okay.
And staff.
And staff.
I mean, as far as putting PISA ratings and generating, um, recommended road maintenance, we can do that at house.
Finding the zoning.
Um, I guess after tonight, really, waiting for the Veterans Home, obviously, uh, business licenses have been sent out, and I will be going in for surgery, uh, next Thursday, and will be out two to four weeks. So, if you need anything planning and zoning wise, please contact Planner Powers, um, I'll be available, kind of, you know, as I can be. I think the first two weeks are the worst, so, uh, I hope to be back as soon as possible, but it really just carries me through the holidays.
I'm batting two weeks, okay? You're young.
I've got 400 hours of sick time.
Oh! Well, two weeks till you're up and running around, you should be good, Jason, come on, you're young. Active.
Appreciate the confidence. And then, well, I'm sorry, on, on the master plan side, um, we should have some preliminary goals and objectives for you guys to review, uh, as well as the first few sections, uh, sometime in January. Be two meetings in January, the 8th and the 15th.
Anything happening with the, um...
No, 8th and, well, just two meetings. We'll get your, we'll get your schedule, but I don't think the schedule's gonna change very much, unless you guys wanna change anything time-wise or day. I mean, we've been rolling on Wednesday, second, fourth Wednesday at 7 o'clock for a number of years.
I don't have any issue with that, if somebody else does.
Okay. That's all I have for tonight, unless you have any questions for me?
Uh, anything different happening with Forestville or the lawsuit, or...
I have not heard any updates on that. Didn't wanna update you, though I did meet on site with the folks from Nanosix Technologies, and they've begun to correct some of the things there, and they'll be constructing a dumpster enclosure at some point. So, thanks for the heads up on that, and... I will say that most people comply with zoning infractions and property maintenance issues. It's a very small group of people that do not. They receive a letter, they call, we explain to them, hey, you know, we received a complaint, we followed it up with a windshield survey, it appears you're in violation, if you could just clean this stuff up, here's a, here's a reference guide on how to get rid of different materials, um, that goes a long way and it usually gets done. Unfortunately, there's a couple of bad apples that, you know, don't clean up, so we have to take it to task, and that's what we have to do. So, yeah, that's been taken care of, well, it's in the process of, they cleaned up some stuff already. But, yeah. Nothing on Long Ear that I know of. Lynn, anything you can update us on? The Forestville project?
From the legal side, the circuit court hearing on Ethel versus the ZBA is 3 o'clock Tuesday. Roger, let us know that. I don't have anything from the Long Ear side.
Any additional public comment? Okay.
I'll make one.
We have someone.
Great.
You can state your name and address, please?
You bet. Rob Sved, 1420 Cox Avenue. The renovation is great to see that that's actually moving forward. With being the chair of the DDA, we've been talking about that development for a while as well. There will be a lot of saddened people that the road is going away, but there is a cute little sidewalk for at least the residents there to get up to, um, Goodwill and Starbucks, so that's nice to see that we're creating that walkable community that Mike Springer started decades ago. Uh, as far as the blight ordinance, um, I agree it probably should be continued to look at. What I don't see in there is any, um, any way for a resident to appeal the decision of the township. Like we talked about, or you talked about, somebody's junk is another person's treasure. One of the reasons I moved out to the township 16 years ago was because there were less restrictions out here than in the city of Marquette. When I was moving a TV into my house in the early 2000s, when TVs were still huge, I had to back into my yard and back right up to my porch, and while I was setting up the TV, somebody from the city of Marquette came by, snapped a picture of my truck parked in the front lawn, and sent me a letter saying that cars are not permitted on, on improved surfaces in the city of Marquette. And I worry that if we, if we go too far, we might end up, um, pricing more people out of the township. If you have somebody that's got a, an RV, I can think of one that's, that I drive by every day, it's got a 35-foot trailer, and it's parked on grass, and if he were to have to pave a pad, it's probably $20,000. It's a lot of, a lot of money for some people, and I think a lot of people in Linda's generation moved out here because it was cheaper, and we do have a lot of really great subdivisions with half million dollar, million dollar homes, but we have to remember that all of the township isn't there yet. And I don't think we can, when we're talking about affordable housing for half the meeting, we can't be talking about increasing housing prices for everybody else, or putting assessments on people. Some of those assessments could put people right out of their houses, and we don't wanna do that either. Just some things to think about with that ordinance going forward. Also, I do have some rental properties in a neighboring community, and I like to do things a little bit fun, so the back entryway, um, on the inside, I decided to do with pallets to give it like a cool, fun, older look, and the city police from the neighboring community stopped by because I had a half dozen pallets sitting in the backyard of my residence, and said that they can't be there because they are determined to be junk. They were there for less than a week. So, when we write the ordinance, I think it will be great, um, but we do wanna have an appeal process and make sure that we're not going too far. And I do understand that I drive by several places on my way home when I leave here today that I really wish were cleaned up, but it is their property, they do own a lot of property, and they have tried to hide most of it. I know that they don't have enough money to put all their vehicles covered, it's just not, not possible. And while they could get rid of them, they are their own property, and people should be allowed to do what they want with their property within reason. As long as it's not creating a safety hazard, I think a little bit of blight is okay. Thanks.
Thank you. All noted. Anyone else wishing to speak? All right, close of public comment, additional comments by planning commissioners?
Yeah, I'd like to, uh, make a comment about, about property. When my property value goes down by 20 or $30,000 because of blight next door to mine, I have a right to enjoy my property too, don't I?
I won't get into a back and forth discussion because I don't think that's what this meeting is for.
No, I'm just, that's a rhetorical question, I wasn't asking you, I was just asking a rhetorical question.
If your property value goes down...
Yeah.
It will only hurt you on the day that you're selling your house. Right? Otherwise, you're just paying taxes on your increased assessed value. Correct.
Okay, and if I wanna retire from that house, and that's my entire investment, and I lose that money, that's okay if I lose it on that day?
It is.
It is. Thank you, I appreciate your honesty.
Yeah.
I hope you enjoy blight next to your place.
I have blight next to my place.
You're a lucky, you're a lucky man.
I know.
Danny?
Um, you know, the, the reason for, uh, ordinances are to regulate how other people use their property, so that's, that's what we're trying to do here, so that we can protect the rights of everybody here, and, uh, can empathize with Steve's position, and this blight ordinance is a good position. As far as appeals, that's what courts are for. Violation of this ordinance is a nuisance per se, a public nuisance, and the law governs the due process rights of anybody that violates an ordinance, just like you would violate a speeding, uh, limit. You have due process, you can appeal it and go to court and use traffic laws. So, you don't need any appeal process in this ordinance, that's what courts are for. But, um, I had intended on making those comments, so we're just gonna thank Jason for this beautiful...
Merry Christmas.
Boy, I put that in my style, Merry Christmas.
After me?
Nothing.
Linda?
So, thank you for this, is the intent that we read it and make suggestions for changes?
Sure.
Okay, and I say that because, um, many communities now will be looking at how they can facilitate more land use, less, uh, mother-in-law backyard, whatever, whatever.
Less parking spaces?
Yeah, yeah, and, you know, in the city, they went through this big to-do where they made you make all this cement to park, and you couldn't park in the front yard, and blah, blah, blah. So, um, you know, I'll be interested to see, we want to make it easier, um, still looking nice for people to have less per square foot kind of housing developments in our communities. People cannot buy houses, you guys, they cannot. Jim's workers cannot buy houses.
It's really tough.
That's all, that's all I have.
Or even...
Oh, other than Vandaboom, so those of you who love to go shopping windows during Christmas, out there looking at all the lights, they are parking on both sides of Vandaboom again, so it is a skinny through fair, um, but the display is beautiful, so go enjoy the display and... It's your turn.
Okay, I just had a couple of comments, uh, the plowing has really seemed a lot better this year.
Really? I got a call from my, a text message from my brother, who's down on the northeast quadrant of Trowbridge, asking when is roads gonna be plowed? Who do I call? I texted him back and said, the road commissioner.
Plowing and sanding and...
Well, that's great to hear, yeah, I mean...
You know, that, that actually on night 492 and...
Good, good.
I don't know about how was it up, up in your road?
It's fine, but I always, we judge it from that 492 Grove Street corner, and it's been fine.
Yeah.
It's been fine.
Are the, well, those are all the trucks, where the trucks...
Well, that's true, they're keeping the roads warm now.
There is a hierarchy there.
And I just wanted to wish you well with your surgery, hope everything goes well.
Thanks, yeah.
Thanks for all your hard work during the year, I know it's, it's a tough job sometimes, and we appreciate everything you do.
Thank you, appreciate it.
You'll be even better when you come back, you'll be bionic.
Yeah, it's like going to Sharper Image, when you get older, you get new parts.
And the whole township, the township board, you know, I...
Right, Doc, you'll play goaltender again.
You got it.
I just think it's a really well-run township, and, you know, things have been happening, and it's, it's going well.
I appreciate that, um, there's nights like tonight where I'll probably be up till midnight because my head will be spinning from the comments, the questions, the, where do we go next? It definitely is not a job where you just, you know, punch out at night and go home, I mean, some nights are like that, but for the most part, I appreciate you saying that because it, it's not easy, um, to make everybody happy but still move forward, you know, and,
Well, you're a teacher too, you teach us.
Wow, thank you.
Procedure.
That's what I went to school for initially, and I switched when I saw some computer mapping and heard about people bringing pitchforks and shotguns to zoning meetings back in the early 80s, so... But, yeah, we, I think we can improve property maintenance in blight, I see it all the time, and it's not like we're picking on anybody, I mean, again, our job is to enforce health, safety, and welfare. Health, you know, has to do with the type of structures and the condition that they're in. Safety is, you know, again, the same thing, but welfare, I think, is a broad brush, and I think, uh, you know, having nice properties or properties that are well-kept falls under the welfare category. And, um, I'm proud that the planning commission requested a revision of the property maintenance and blight ordinance, and that there's something concrete in the works, yes, it needs to be tweaked a little bit, but hopefully in the next couple of years, um, we'll see some improvement in that case. It'll help to have somebody on board, um, like a former police officer who has familiarity with some of the characters that we'll run into, um, to get these things done. But, yeah, it takes time, none of this stuff, it's like, it's like football, you know, just moving, moving the ball down the field, and so I take a lot of pride in doing that.
Well, I really appreciate it, and I know I've learned a lot from you over the years you're, from starting out, that, and all of us, I'm sure, have learned quite a bit, so...
Thanks.
Thanks, Jason. All right, with that, meeting adjourned.
I'll recover...